All in order, please rise for the flag salute while our two chiefs begin.
Aye.
Well, we give to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, chiefs.
Thank you, chiefs. Roll call, please, Lisa.
Mr. Kriebel?
Here.
Commissioner Langria?
Here.
Mayor Holtzman?
Here. On December 16th, 2019, official notice of this meeting was given to the press of Atlantic City, the Mainland Journal, and the Current, and was duly posted on the city bulletin board and on the city website. Before we begin tonight, I do want to acknowledge, we have Freeholder John Rizley here with us tonight. And we have Atlantic County surrogate, Ms. Jim Kersey. And we have Nanette Galloway, our reporter.
Our reporter on She's Down Beach.
I know.
Enough having personal reporters.
Yeah, right.
We do see her enough.
She's like Pam.
On retainer.
So, for the people that are here that may not come to other meetings, just to let you know that our first meeting of the month, we have all our department heads to give us an update on their individual departments, and tonight is our reorg. So, most of our agenda is items for a reorganization. And then, after we have the open public discussion, we then go into our meeting where we vote. Which means, Emily, if you want to go have dinner and come back, you might want to do that. Okay. Alrighty, so, we have no presentation, so we will start with Ernie. Would you, here, Ernie. You're welcome. Ernie already knows to go brief.
Good evening. Tonight, we'll talk about water and wastewater. For the year, last year, we did 365 million gallons total for the year. It's about equal what we did in 2018. So, creeping up slightly. December, we did 23 million gallons. That's pretty much exactly what we did the year before. As far as what's going on with water, we're continuing to put in hydrants. That's going to be a project for the year going forward. We just recently finished hydrating yesterday Baton Rouge and Ventnor Avenue. We're going to be doing one next week on Atlantic Avenue and Oxford. As far as the new chlorination systems, I have some very good news on that. Well 8 and Well 10 are completely finished and are operational. As for the chlorination itself, I'm very happy with the results. I will be able to push chlorine into the water, make it very safe for residents.
We have good water.
Our water is very good.
Yes.
In December, we have an annual audit from the DEP Bureau of Safe Drinking Water. We had no issues with that. They basically go and review all of the analysis and everything we've done for the year. So, that came out really well. 2020 is a lead and copper sampling year. Now, that might sound like that's simple, but lead and copper takes a lot of effort. We have to do 30 samples. And again, that doesn't sound like a lot, but I need the residents' help. And the sample sites, we need, they actually take the samples, which makes it different from every other sample that we take in drinking water. So, I'm going to be on that very hard, in the spring, I want to take the samples. The sample period is actually June 1st through September 30th, and I want to have them done in June because it's just easier to get it done.
Does the state dictate what residence house you go to?
There is a range. You have to have a home that is built in the 1910, 1920, 1930 range that has either a lead service, galvanized service line. Now, Ventnor doesn't have lead lines, it has galvanized services. The other range is homes built between 1982 and 1986. So, you've got to be very selective where you get these 30 sample sites. So, right off from the bat, you're throwing most of the homes out. And then, you have to consider, well, what did we do three years ago? Because it's a three-year monitoring period. And with that, it just makes the whole thing very difficult, so. Go on to wastewater. Really not much to say about that, it's just we're continuing to keep it going.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you, Ernie.
You're welcome.
I'm glad I asked that question because I was curious. Okay, next, Chief Cahill.
The fire department is in the midst of building Station 2. They put up about 80 to 90 percent of the roof trusses today, so we're on time and target for where we are at this phase of the, I guess, I guess.
Project.
Project, I'm sorry. It's in the day. We had a couple of very productive meetings this week, which Ed was involved with, closing all the little loopholes at the end we don't want to run into. And everything else is working out right. Our call volume for the month of December was about as it was last year, and our call volume for the year, we're down slightly, but we had no adverse weather effects this year so far, or pardon me, in '19 that inflates our service numbers. So, we're static on call volume, but we're busy. We're the second busiest department in the county at this point for fire and AMS.
You want to mention the signaling at Station 2?
The signaling, you mean, the street? Yeah, well, actually, I received an email from the county about that. They are on board with everything I spoke to them about five months ago, and everything I asked them to do, they're going to do. So, we're in good shape with all the ancillary entities we have to deal with.
Will be controlled by the firehouse with that signal there?
Well, they're actually going to re-mark the whole intersection and make it safer for us to get out and for people to get by when we're responding out of the building. On Wellington.
So, you won't be able to make a left out of that one street parallel anymore, right? Isn't that what you said?
No, no, you'll be able to do it, but it'll be controlled in a different manner that doesn't allow traffic to sit in front of the firehouse. It's, it's.
Oh, because they come out and then they get stuck.
They get stuck between the two lights and blocks.
There's going to be a learning curve there when that all gets resignalized, but it's good that we got exactly what we needed for that corner.
And the plans are already drawn up and?
They're saying like 98 percent.
That's not part of the resignalization of?
It is.
That is that project. Okay, so, the money there is an issue. I talked to John Peterson today about it.
I don't think that the plan is, I don't know that they've squared away the funding for the federal highway.
They have not. It's now it's the I-Bank. Federal money pulled out.
So, is there something else that we need the county people to? Aren't there some other issues?
Drainage, yeah. Yeah, the, so, the county's project is to resignalize all the intersections on Wellington, Dorset, and Ventnor Avenue from Dorset to Margate and through Margate. Our concern is here. The plans that we've seen are only dealing with signalization, that's my understanding. Striping as well.
And the accessible corner.
Accessible corners. Our concern is, and we've seen it firsthand at Dunkin' Donuts, that intersection, when they put these handicap ramps in, does not take into consideration stormwater. Stormwater in Ventnor runs from Atlantic to the ocean, Atlantic to the bay. So, the water runs down the gutters and goes, bubble up, siphons, whatever you want to call, under these roads. So, they are old, they've been here for probably 100 years. They're small, mostly blocked. We've talked to them, we've asked the county to include that, and they've said.
They said it's not included in the project.
Right.
Or the funding, but now that that funding.
Has changed.
Has changed, potentially, we could ask.
We could ask. We might be making that ask. We'll see. It's an issue we're having that if we're going to be doing a lot of work in a county road, we should include that. Okay, we will do that, okay, great. So, that's, that's all I have on that.
Great. That's okay, early on. Bill?
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. The, as you know, the town's doing really well. It's increasing in value, and properties are selling pretty quickly. I have, I did a little research on the sales. Between '14 and '15, the average time on the market was 143 days. The high was 1,320 days that it sat. So, the properties that sold between '14 and '15, some of them sat on the market for over 1,300 days. '15 to '16, it was 1,200 days that it sat for at the most, and the average was 124. In this past year, the property sold an average of 51 days, a high of 241 days.
Wow, that's huge.
So, it went from 1,300 days to 51 days?
Well, it went from 143 on average.
On average.
1320 at the high mark, and 241 now at the low mark. Which is good. And our value has increased since our rebuild. We went up from 17 to 18, like 4 million. 18 to 19, about 6 and 1/2 million. And this past year, we've increased to 13 million dollars.
Wow.
That's just your block.
Should you, can I have your report?
Yeah, I just have stuff written down.
That's good, yeah, just send them to me.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks, Bill.
Sure, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim?
Hi, good evening. Just a few updates and a few things. First, in regards to the door security, since we are at a point where we're going out to bid for the doors, I decided to get the project started. So, I'm meeting with the vendor tomorrow to at least get all of the nuts and bolts work done. We're going to get all the wiring done, get the server in place, do the doors we can do, so that when we get the bid specs done, and we get the bid, out to bid and get the doors in, all we're going to have to do is pop the hardware in and be ready to go. So, at least, this is good. And that also gives us more time to get used to the system and to get any, you know, potential issues or stuff out of it before, you know, the whole thing's done. It just gives us a little more time, so I decided to get them in here. So, they're coming in tomorrow, do a kickoff meeting, and we're going to at least get the project rolling. In regards to the email system, we had to amend our quote to Dell to up our licenses by 10 in order to get into the next tier of support for the, for the project. That's been done, it's been sent to Dell. Now, it's a waiting game on Microsoft on when we'll get the, when we get the contracts. Once we get the contracts done and signed, because they already have the purchase order, I'm looking at probably hopefully four to six weeks to implement the email. So, that should hopefully be done sometime soon. Firehouse was given the first of two mobile tablets this week, so the inspectors can now be doing mobile inspections and also mobile printers, so that they can actually give violations and inspection notices right at the, right at the sites. They should have the second one by the first part of next week and be ready to roll on that.
Did they get printers as well?
They got printers, yeah, they got mobile printers. Working right now with Verizon to upgrade our 911 circuits, because we were notified by Tactical for communications upgrade, that we have to upgrade our 911 system. So, it's just a matter of upgrading the, the speed of the circuit, all the different stuff, so, right now, I'm trying to get the finalized quotes from Verizon as to what it's going to be.
What we're finding is that one more. Any of the upgrading we're beginning to do for IT, we're going to immediately get done because this was an $11,000 expenditure for 911. That was 40 years outdated, basically, correct?
Yeah.
Hadn't been touched in 40 years. So, with a building like this, as we move on, one of the things we're going to have to take into consideration is getting public utilities involved, seeing what we are going to need, if the systems we are going to be requesting or building or operating with, if this building is going to be able to support that, and what it's going to cost us to upgrade the building. So, any project moving forward, dealing with phones, electronics, correct?
Which goes into the next, which was the next thing that I was doing. As I'm working, also have worked with Comcast and Beth, if you could, I'm going to need your signature on that. Our Wi-Fi, our current Wi-Fi, anybody who uses Wi-Fi in this building, it's slower than slow. Well.
Use the Xfinity that my phone picks up.
Yeah, well, I found out that, I found out through, through a lot of my research, we were dealing with a 16-2 speed, which is actually slower than DSL. So, I worked with Comcast over the last several days, and our national account is no longer available to be able to be upgraded, but I was able to get a business class for less than what we're currently paying with a speed of 200. So, that's going to increase the speed by 15 times, which we actually need to coincide with the door security and everything, so, that's just something that's, that's moving.
Everything's going wireless.
Yeah, it's, so, that's, you know, the next thing that I'll be working with the door company is to upgrade our Wi-Fi signal, which, which right now is eight years old, the one that we have in here, so, we'll be talking with them tomorrow, and I already have a quote from them to be able to do that.
Great.
And that's what I got for right now.
Great, thank you. Lisa?
I'll just give you a 2019 city clerk year roundup. So, for 2019, we processed 392 resolutions, we prepared 23 ordinances, we processed 40 street openings, we issued 130 certified copies, 62 marriage license, 435 death certificates, we processed 352 dog licenses, sent out 290 letters reminding people for the renewal of 2020 dog renewals. We processed 160 mercantile licenses, three which were new owners. We had approximately 160 Oprah requests, and we processed approximately 33 yard sales.
Thank you.
And that's about it, that's all I got.
That's it, that's all you did this year? I don't think we need you. Thank you, Lisa. Margaret?
We had our tax sale, December 27. Everything went, nothing was struck to the municipality. I sent out all the certificates that they can record it, sent out reminder letters to the homeowners to let them know a lien was placed on their property. Basically, been working on that for the past two weeks. And the other thing we're working on is the senior citizens for their $250 deduction, we're sending those letters out, so, by tomorrow, they'll be out in the mail for people.
Great.
Okeydoke.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Al?
Okay, I'm still currently working on this year's budget. It's a lot of work. I got, we went and met with some of the departments, went over their budgets already, and the auditors are coming on Monday to go over, and Leon's going to come over and work on the budget with me.
You redesigned the way we're doing our books internally, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
By departments?
Yeah.
Yes. Right, which is great.
And also, he, he's coming Monday because we're the only town that he has that's finished closing the year out, so.
Imagine that.
That's why he's coming. So, hopefully.
Nine days, that's pretty good.
That's real good.
So, that's why he's coming with the auditing staff, so they're going, we're going to put the AFS together and all that.
Great.
That's what I'll be working on over the next few weeks.
Wonderful.
Al, did you, were you from the community disaster?
I got the information where we have to send the payment to.
But she gave us the interest?
No, she did not give us the interest, but I got where I have to send the payment to, but I don't know how much it is.
Yeah.
Typical.
From that woman, or?
No, I got it from, from the state.
You want to let Leon know that she was non-responsive?
Yeah, I can let him know.
I've emailed her a few times.
I still have.
Yeah.
And I have gotten no response, but I got it from Tim Cunningham of Larcher Grant. He gave me the person that gave me the person I can send the payment to.
Maybe they don't want the money.
There you go.
They don't send it till we find out.
Yeah.
He thinks it's for the budget, it's interesting and principal, right?
I had principal, but I don't have the interest.
Okay. Ed?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I handed out the, the report with everything, but I'll just touch on a few highlights. We are removing holiday decorations, that'll wrap up hopefully early part of next week.
Can I just give you one reminder on that? We ordered the same, it's not you, it's the company, we ordered the same exact snowflakes. And for some reason, this year's, the lighting is more like a white, and last year's, they're like, yeah, but same thing, though. Last year, the lights are a little yellowish.
No two snowflakes.
Stop it. So, can you do me a favor? Yeah, yeah. Right, yeah, so, did they take them down yet?
We took them down and we did separate them.
So, okay, okay.
I know which ones.
So, you separated, so just let me know how many yellow, how many white, and then we'll figure it out, because I can't see the two different colors like that.
Understood.
Yeah, we will put one color on Atlantic and we'll buy more for Ventnor Avenue.
Understood.
Okay? And, and can we work with the electric company to make, because for our poles to have electric, like, way before?
They were advised not to.
I know, I know, we need to advise them in June. I know.
They didn't, like, nine of the ones that we event.
Right. Can you, just, because I'll, yeah, first, let me.
I did.
I know.
I did email Ken Moskowitz.
Okay, good.
Told him, you know, thank you for trying.
I know, he did, but yeah.
We have the nine that you didn't get to this year, we'll have more for next year, and I'll get it to him in the summertime. I may get it to him next month.
Yeah, right, and then just keep sending it, exactly, that'd be great. All right, and just give me a count of the yellow and the white.
Okay.
So, next year, we can look like Hamilton. The truth, oh my God. Yes, it's just a whole different, I mean, they look.
Let's shoot a little bit.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, yeah, I got to shoot again. Ed, that's where I saw the trash cans.
I want to move this medium.
I'm sorry.
Five minutes on Christmas light.
Well, that's important, it's a visual.
We are, we are also taking advantage of the mild weather, and we're working on vegetation and cleaning up the landscaping beds at the tennis courts, library, and city hall. We have the plows ready, the salt spreaders ready, if that event ever comes, or those events come, we will be ready for them, and our next effort will be on the beach, trying to grade out the dune paths for, actually, safe access to the beach, leveling them out. I am meeting with the Army Corps and the DEP on the 24th of this month. Everything else is on this list, if you have any questions.
Great.
Just to follow up on the, on the beach erosion. There are a lot of comments, a lot of calls. We don't control beyond the dunes. We are allowed to maintain the beach paths that Ed just talked about. The erosion, we can fix those cliffs, if you want to call them that. We can fix that and make them safe, but we cannot fill the beach. We cannot recreate that beach. We're not due for another beach replenishment until next fall. Not, not this coming fall, next fall. Maybe spring. They're always late.
After the summer.
They're always late. We're going to have to figure out what we're going to do for this summer, and it, and it might not be have beaches in that area at high tide.
Okay.
Because even this past summer, Buffalo Avenue, at high tide, full moon high tide, the beach was at the toe of the dune. That was this, this summer. So, there's, there's an issue there that we've made Army Corps aware.
We're not allowed to do it.
We don't have dredge.
I got you.
We don't want a dredge.
Oh, yeah, I got you, okay.
Just make sure Ed heard that, we do not want a dredge. We're not buying a dredge.
Now, what if we put a special request in, Lance?
We have, we've asked them. Their response is, you're on a three-year replenishment program, and that's what they do, they're somewhere else now.
Okay, okay.
The dredge isn't waiting.
Yeah, I know, and the machines and all.
And the funding is not.
The funding's not there.
Their funding is.
Three.
By the year.
It's a cycle of three year.
Yeah, sure.
So, we will, we're going to meet with them on the 24th, and some of the guys are from, on a conference call, like.
I've asked them to come here.
Okay, good.
Like, that's a possibility.
We've got a good relationship with, with both Bill Dixon.
Bill Dixon and Keith Watson.
And Keith Watson from, from DEP, and then Ken Goldberg from the Army Corps has been real responsive to us. Doesn't one of them live in town? Goldberg has an apartment in, in Margate. The deputy commissioner of the DEP has a condo here in.
Ventnor.
Cambridge Avenue.
Who loves multicolored snowflakes.
Yeah. So, we have reached out to the appropriate agencies, it's just a fact of, it's not coming in with a couple dump trucks, load of sand.
Right.
It's thousands of cubic yards of sand that have to come in and fix that, and it's not something that, that we can readily just do.
Would they tell us to close those beaches, Lance? For safety issues, or no?
They won't, it's not a safety thing, it's a convenience.
Okay.
It's going to be a convenience thing in the summertime.
Okay.
If you live on a street, Buffalo Avenue, if you live there, you may have to go a couple blocks north or south. To get to a beach where you can put your chairs out and sit there for the day.
I got you.
And we're hoping that that doesn't happen, but, you know, in the spring, we get, we get sand back. What happens in the winter, we all live here, we know, sand leaves in the wintertime, it comes back in the summer. Last year, it didn't come back enough. It was, if you went to that beach, and I did, because Evan was on that beach, the sand was 50 yards off the beach, because you had a gully or a tidal pond every, every day at low tide. So, you would have that, and that's actually dangerous, but the sand's there, it just never got pushed up on the beach.
Gotcha, okay.
Sorry to spend so much time. That's a critical thing for.
No, it is, yeah, it is.
We need to communicate that to the public.
Right, yeah.
Do a post with Sarah on this before the 24th? Or after the 24th, I'm asking.
I think a suggestion is that we post that we are meeting with the Army Corps and the DEP on the 24th. We have asked, you know, for some action, we've asked for this meeting, and we will meet, and then, and I've asked them to produce the public notes.
Okay.
I think they should explain what their plan is to address this.
Okay, so, we'll leave that, we'll leave that up to the, well, I'll post that sometime in the next week or so, to be prepared, that we'll have a meeting and we'll have more information for the 24th, but I won't say how much we are, are going to do.
We don't know. We don't know, and I'm pretty sure I know what the answer's going to be. They're going to get a replenishment in a year and a half.
Yeah, yeah, but at least we're saying what we're going to do, when we're going to do it.
Thanks, Ed. Chief Biaggi.
I don't have a year-end yet, we do an annual report, and we'll be compiling all the UCR reports and our call volume, I'll wait for the next meeting to do that. Stuff that's more pending is, I spoke with Chief Cahill, and one of the things that was lacking in our initial construction of the firehouse was security, cameras, they have not got it. For building that new, there's no alarm, there's no cameras, when they leave, and the garage doors stay open, it needs accessibility, we've got a plan on getting some external cameras up and playing, and it would probably be the best time to do it, is while we're at the planning stage here, it's not that expensive, I think we should start looking into that before they start closing up walls and things and getting a model system in place there.
Good idea.
Yeah.
That's all Wi-Fi too, now.
Yeah, it's all Wi-Fi.
But, it's a random building, we've got to have, all our buildings are going to have it.
Right.
It's going to be required, Homeland Security requires it, so, let's get ahead of the other game on this one. Other thing is that we're coming into, with special events, we're coming into that area where we need to, let's start planning things, and usually, we have the VBA that plans most of these things, so, what I'm proposing is that, that we hire a seasonal employee, minimum wage, we have one in mind, that will do an hour of work to get our block parties and our concerts in place, until we get a more suitable firm, a marketing firm, that we can do RRP's on and start vetting them, but we definitely need this right now, it's something that our in-house staff cannot do alone, so, minimum wage employee would be the best do alone. So minimum wage employee would be the best way to go. I have somebody in mind.
Did you say part-time?
Part-time, yes.
Yeah. So this is a good conversation we had today. Part of it is carving out some of the celebration of public events line item. And we had professional services that we used for, for the VBA. Since the VBA is not, no longer gonna need that somehow, and they're, they're working on the, on the number, in long-term to have potentially a PR retainer, retained firm that would work with every department, that would, you know, be in contact with every department head to say, what do you have that needs to, that needs to be produced, that needs to be communicated? And also help with, with special events. In the short-term, between now and when we can get that done, I think we need somebody to make sure that our signature events, which is basically the concerts, very popular, and the block party need to be, you know, they need, there's ground, there's groundwork that has to be done now.
I understand. I, my concern honestly is that we have other big events in the city. One being the parade. The person is a volunteer and doesn't.
Discuss that.
Okay.
Actually, we planned on doing the same hourly offering for that employee as well. Because that is a huge undertaking. It's actually taking.
It is.
To the next level.
Yeah.
So whatever we're gonna be offering, this seasonal employee for this first.
He'd be looking at two.
He would be looking at two.
Right.
Those four events.
Yes, absolutely.
That's the parade.
And where is that, where's, what line item?
That would be out of the VBA money that we did have.
Did they fall apart?
They didn't fall apart, but they.
Hold it. That's what I meant. Okay.
Yeah, I guess you could say. I mean, it was, it's, it's more that they, um, it's, it was a lot of work. But, but, but in a way, they handed over to us. They, the, the block party and the concerts, a lot of times they, they handled all that. And they, but they came to a sort of a, a realization that that wasn't really fulfilling the mission as a business association. Those were, and, and they, all, all the people involved had their own businesses. So it was just, it, it just, it, it, I think, I think this potentially could be a more successful way. I don't think the city needs to be in a party planning business, but we do, but other cities, and we have a few signature events that we want, that I think we can, should continue to put on. We're more likely to encourage things like this, the, the seafood fest and other privately held events.
All right. Al, I'll, I'll go over that line item with you.
Okay.
Before they start carving out it. No, just so, cause I know what we use it for.
We're on, we're in January. These are things that we've talked about. So we're editing where if we don't jump on this soon, we're not gonna have a block.
Right.
So that's something we're.
No, I'm fine with it. I just wanna get with Al with the, the budget items.
I'm just making you aware.
That's fine. That's fine. Okay.
And that's pretty much it. The next meeting I will have everything for the year.
Okay.
And that's really, I mean, do you agree that, that those are two events that we wanna continue to?
Oh, yeah.
I have no, I agree. And I don't have a problem paying somebody to do the job. My concern is to, you pay one person and you have somebody that's been working for nothing for years.
I agree.
Putting on great events. It's just not a good, it's just not good.
That was one of our things we've run up.
Yeah.
We offered, we offered that.
Yeah.
She may not take it.
No, she may not. But I think, yeah, you, you gotta be, yeah. It's just bad taste in my mouth at first when you said it. So I'm good.
Understood.
No comment.
Thank you.
Is there someone in the city, this person, who would be recording?
You got a special event there in answer to me. Unless you wanna assign somebody else to it. But I think that's a smart.
I nominate the chief.
I nominate the chief. I second that.
I second the nomination.
Roll call. Everybody say aye.
I volunteer my services.
I don't have to give you a stipend, right?
Nope.
Okay. Lisa, make, make sure that's on record.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Department head's leaving this town?
They can apartment.
Just real quick, Jimmy couldn't make it tonight. He asked me if he could, he could bow out. We're working on a few things, some ordinance amendments that will be sent in to Mr. McGuire soon, dealing with a couple of different things with land use, things of that nature. So we're moving that forward.
Okay.
Other than that, we're pretty, I try monthly to send, weekly to send you guys copies of the complaints we get.
Yes.
The code complaints. And they're on top of it. You know, they get out. You get a call, we gotta check it out. Sometimes it's not there, sometimes it is.
Yeah.
But some of the stuff we're trying to address is what we're seeing downtown.
Yeah.
They're going out. They're, they're looking at the Delaware Meat Market site. That was an issue. So.
And some of the other businesses, I think.
Yeah. We've, we've been kinda letting them move along, but they're moving too slow.
Yeah.
Moving too slow in the maintenance of the properties and we're gonna get back on top of that. So.
And crimpers needs to do something with their outside.
I think, I think we all need to be held to the same standard.
Absolutely. Cause every time I look out, every time I drive by there.
A lot of people say.
It's, 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 the, the sign is just.
Fade as you.
It's just bad. It's bad.
Sign.
If you're gonna have a sign, then it should look good. If you're not gonna keep it up, then just.
It's a disrepair. It has to be.
Right. If not, then just paint over it and make it one color. But the same words, you can barely see and it looks really not pretty.
All right. I will make mention of that.
Chief Cahill, second that only. I think we're good. The only department head that is staying is Ed to go over the.
Give it up. Hands in and have a break.
Just.
Thank you all.
Lisa, I'll catch you.
It's okay.
Do you guys wanna say anything while you're here?
What is that noise? What is?
It's bad. All right, it's a break.
Yeah, pull that out. People can't see it. This TV's not working.
No, anything about it. Kitchen.
Yeah.
Still here.
We don't have any capital discussion tonight? Maria, Ed? No capital? Okay.
I handed that out there.
All right. Thank you. The next, the following are the items that we will take action immediately after following the workshop portion tonight. First thing is we have, we'll have our minutes from December 12th, 2019. We have no introductions of ordinances. We have no public hearings or adoptions. Introduc-, why, why do you have it that we don't have none, any? And then right under it does have a public hearing.
You don't have any ordinances for a public.
No ordinances.
No ordinances. Okay. I got you.
Jump ahead.
I got you. We do have two public hearings for street openings, 116 Stratford Avenue and 5900 Borwalk Avenue. And the following is a very long list of, a part of our rework. So just bear with me. Okay. They are all resolutions for the new year, which is 2020. I will say the number after that, so you don't hear me say 2020 40 times. So the first one is 2020 dash 001 and that is us awarding a contract to our city solicitor, Tim McGuire. The next one is number 002 and that is us awarding a contract to the city auditor Ford Scott and Associates. The next is 003, awarding a contract planning and grant assistance from James Rotella. The next is 004 and that's a contract for a conflict solicitor, Parker McKay. The next is 005 and that's awarding a contract to our general tax counsel, Hank Rovillard. The next is 006, award contract for risk management consultants, CJ Adams and Stanley Gunnison. The next is 007, award contract for NJEIT financing for bond counsel, Joel Fleishman. The next is 008, award contract for bond counselor, Archer and Greiner. Next is 009, award contract for health insurance broker, professional benefit counseling, counsel, consultants incorporated. Next is 010, awarding the contract for city prosecutor, William Reynolds. Next is 011, award a contract for public defender, Darren Lord. 012, award a contract for continuing disclosure agent, NW Financial Group. 013, award contract for financial advisor of record, NW Financial Group. 014, award contract for labor relations and counsel, Grecio Pepper, no, she, they got new partners, DeSano and Ruth. 015, authorizing the annual schedule for the city commission, commissioners' meetings slash the sunshine notice. 016, designation of the official newspapers. 017, designate public agency compliance officer, being Lisa Han, our city clerk. 018, establishing rules of order and conduct for the city commission meetings. 019, designating bank depositories. 020, adopting cash management plan. 021, 2020's temporary budget. 022, appointing Sam Gus for the fund commissioner and Joe Izinelli as alternate. Probably said that wrong. 023, appointing contact person for the employment practices liability hotline with the county, Lanta County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund. Appointing JIF safety coordinator, Donna Peterson. Authorizing the tax assessor to handle appeals. 026, authorizing the tax collector to charge interest on delinquent tax property and sewer accounts. 027, authorizing the tax collector to process properly, property and sewer tax refund and cancellation of refunds of a delinquency of $10 or less. 028, authorizing public employee bonds. 029, appointing a police custodial records. 030, authorizing agreement with Lantacare for medical surveillance program for firefighters, police, and public works and all new employees for the city as required. 031, appointing class three members to the planning board for 2020. 032, appointing members to the planning board for the year of, regular planning board, 2020. 033, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with emergency training and consultant. 034, appointing the green team advisory committee. 035, appointing the municipal alliance committee. 036, authorizing a stipend to be paid to John Connor to serve as an on-call employee for the sewer department. 037, authorizing a stipend to be paid to Wayne Coleman to serve as an on-call employee for the sewer department. 038, authorizing agreement for code red emergency notification system between the city of Vettner and Onsov LLC. 039, authorizing a professional service contract for police training to the Rogers Group LLC not to exceed $14,403. 040, supporting the 2020 census. 041, adopting a wellness policy in the city of Vettner. 042, 43, 44, and 45 are all tax abatements. And in the agenda, there's, the streets are listed. 046 is a refund of a tax payment. 047, authorizing the contract with jobs for Blue for coordination of off-duty, off-duty employment of our police officers. 048, emergen-, we had an emergency repair to wastewater collection at the intersection of Calvert and Dorset. 049, authorizing our purchase agent to purchase, to prepare plan specifications and publicly bid 81-inch residential cold meters and 35 eighth times three-quarter meters for the option for one additional bid. 0020 dash one. 050 is authorizing the city of Vettner to apply for and accept a sub-grant award from the federal fiscal year 2020 from the Department of Homeland Security, Emergency Management, Performance Grant Program Funding, and for the city chief financial officer to amend the budget and certify the availability of funds. 051, amending resolution to, oh, 2019, 014, Grecio, Pepper, DeSano, Ruth Labor Council. 052, appointing Prague Incorporated to coordinate and perform alcohol and drug testing on staff.
That should be POG.
POG. You really gotta correct me? Like, really? I'm out of breath already. Jeez. 053, appointing an ad hoc citizen advisory committee. 054, appointing members of the city of Vettner creative team for 2020. That's our Vettner Arts Alliance. 055, approving a memorandum of agreement between the city of Vettner and the New Jersey Police Bellevanit, whatever. So thank, but yeah, yeah, Association Local Ninety.
PBA.
PBA, 97. Next is 056, adjusting the salary of our municipal judge, Michael Moska.
Well done.
Well done.
Thank you.
That was very well done.
Yep.
I'm so glad you were here tonight.
Yeah. Okay. The next thing on our agenda, we will approve bills and payrolls. We will have discussion items. Do we have discussion items?
Have one.
We have one. So we will do our discussion item now.
That is.
Just help me here. Okay, where am I?
I have it, I have it, I have it. It is hardship variance for 114 South Portland Avenue.
Yes.
For street vacation, vacation. Ed?
This is a new construction and we are required to replace the water sewers.
It's a street opening, not a street vacation. Okay.
And the streets are the moratorium. So this is the official request to repair.
Okay. So this is one that we're asking them to replace the old.
That's correct.
Okay.
The old galvanized service and we are required to replace it.
So in, in prior years, when someone builds a new house or does enough renovations, they just connect to the old lines out in the street.
Right.
With their new service, with a new meter and whatever. And we've had this discussion multiple times. A year ago? Plus or minus. Ed and Ernie came to, to me first and we brought it here to talk about. And we have a lot of old connections with the sewer and water lines. Some of the old water line connections are these old lead goos next. So what we've found is that we recognize where these are when that line was put in for those homes. And when we see them come in for new construction or significant renovation, we've asked them to replace them. And that's one of these cases here in order to get newer connections that don't break.
Right.
They're 100-year-old.
Yeah.
So.
And, and it's also the, they're building bigger homes than, than what they tore down.
Right.
And the older surface is, is smaller by number and, and it's aged. So the natural blood pressure that's provided is, is limited. So you, you would put in a new house and then the complaints to, to the city for low pressure. So to kind of protect them.
It's, it's proactive, not reactive.
Exactly.
Saves us problems down the road with breaks.
We've done, we've done this for many houses through the years.
Forty or 50 times in the last year.
Yes, right.
Two on the agenda.
And you, as our engineer, you, you evaluate the situation and then it comes to us. And we trust what you, what you're telling us. So it's a no-brainer. Okay. You okay with that, Tim?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. So this, this will be a public hearing on this, the first meeting of February.
Right.
2020.
Okay.
Which is the date of, what is that date?
The next meeting is the 23rd, so it'll be two weeks after that. It'll be.
February 13th. No, that's a.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, cause 14th is Friday.
Friday, yes.
February 13th.
Yes.
2/30. So we'll let the.
I'll call them tomorrow.
Gavinson know.
Yes.
That that's, because they'll have to come and talk.
Correct.
Give a presentation. Not a presentation, but comments. Um, I don't think so. Is that all you have tonight, Ed? Do we need to hold you here for anything?
We don't need you.
We, we have two.
Two of them. Okay. So why don't we hold?
Yeah, he's gotta stay.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. We have two street. You're right. Okay. All right. We'll go, I'll, that's fine. Okay. I'm sorry. You told her. Next, we have our public portion. This is for everything that we discussed so far. If you'd like to get up and, and speak. So do I have a motion open to the public?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second, second motion.
All in favor? Aye. Anybody like to talk about anything that we discussed thus far? There will be another public portion at the end where you can talk about anything that you may wanna talk about. But this is only on this. We're good? All right. I see none. Do I have a motion to close public portion?
Motion to close.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Do I have a motion to close the workshop portion of the meeting?
Motion to close workshop?
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First, first item to vote on is our minutes from December 12th, 2019, regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve minutes from December 12th, 2019?
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call.
Mr. Kreebel?
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langraff?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
abstain. We do not have any ordinances to introduce. We do not have any public hearings on ordinances, and we do not have any ordinance adoptions. So the next is our public hearings on our street openings. Ed, you'll talk to us about that. One is, once, really, we don't have to, because we just need to know if anybody wants to get up. One is one sixteen South Stratford Avenue, and the other one's 5900. So I have a motion to open public hearing on these street openings.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone like to get up and discuss anything on these two street openings? The one address is one sixteen Stratford Avenue, and the other one is 5900 Boardwalk. You come to the microphone, you please state your name and your address, and then whatever you'd like to say.
Good evening. I'm Jackie Reimberg, one thirteen South Newport Ave. So we have a concern about the street opening in front of us, which is on Newport Ave for one sixteen South Stratford, because the opening is on Newport. It's winter. If they leave it open, and it freezes, it's a problem. It's access to the boardwalk, it's access to the cold, and the timing.
What are we gonna leave open?
Well, when they open it, they have to leave it open to put in the lines to do it, right?
Ed, would you like to explain the process?
Yeah, can you explain that? That would be lovely.
The process will be, yes, they have to open up the street to extend the sewer main, put in the water service and the sewer service. Trenches will not be allowed to be opened overnight, so they'll work each day to get to work as much as they can in one day, then they'll backfill, and they'll keep it safe. They should be able to finish it in a day, maybe extended to the second day in terms of utility. Then they'll backfill, then they will paint. Painting's gonna be, depending on the weather, but it will be safe and will be passable and accessible until it is painted. And again, that operation will take half a day to paint. So...
Yeah, get to state your name and your address.
Well, we have a... My name's Emily Christian, I live at one eleven South Newport. The whole line on the street is affected by that one thing. So are we gonna lose our water? Are we gonna have the pipes freeze in our houses? And one of the new neighbors that just purchased a $1.3 million house is not here, but he's a lawyer, and he suggested, what happens if he's in Vermont or Tokyo doing a law firm scenario? Is he able to have his house not freeze? That's what we're concerned about. Why are you doing now?
This happens every day.
No, but let's just listen to what we're saying. That house has been built since last May.
Okay.
Okay? Why they didn't do this in the summer months, when you could get a day where you wouldn't lose the freezing? And we all have our heat on right now, and I have seen a lot of houses that freeze for the water issue.
So I don't think this would affect your house, the interior of your house?
The main valve that is in front of the house affects all of the houses on that.
None of that gets turned off.
None of that gets...
None of that gets turned off.
It is not specified in Ben Chapman's letter to us saying anything about what he is doing or the parameters.
It's a water tap to replace a service.
But it does not say that in the letter that we've certified.
Okay, so we'll clarify.
That's why we're here, expressing our views, to say that we've known Ben Chapman to do certain things on that property already, that were not approved by the neighbors, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and he's not made it very conducive to the rest of the street when he is doing something to those houses. And that's what we're trying to say, is that if you're gonna block driveways, if you're gonna block the street, it does affect us getting to work, having our normal life, and having freezing pipes to be effective.
I understand your concerns. Ed will give it...
I don't understand them at all. This happens every day.
We'll monitor this, and they shouldn't have to shut the water off, but we don't anticipate that, because there's always that small chance that there's some fracture to the pipe. We don't expect that to tap alive mains running the water service. The sewer main, if they need to extend that, that has zero impact to you, because this property would be upstreaming. So we don't anticipate shut the water. The sanitary sewer should have zero impact on you. In terms of repainting of the street, because it's gonna go to the limit of where they have to open it, if that is in front of your property, we'll make sure that it does not impact your access to your property. If it is in front of your driveway, which off the top of my head, I don't know, we'll make sure that a notice is given, because they're gonna come in on this day, or do this, so at least you have a heads up to move your car, so that the work in front of your house on the street can be completed. So we'll do that.
The pipes that are there are hundred-years-old, just like more than that.
Understood.
And they're not new.
I understand, and as the commissioner said, that's the case all around town, and we tap mains, we tap the water mains all the time with water services, so it's cast iron, but we do it all the time. There's always that small chance that there's, you're running into a problem, but we don't anticipate it. If it happens, we'll make sure that we address it, we'll make sure that a notice.
So can I ask, do I have to stand up?
Are you here?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So will it, I just am curious, will it improve the water pressure for the people who are here?
No, because it's not gonna, right, right.
I need to ask a question. I also need to ask the question that they dug up all behind my house for their electrical line, and I've spoken to Mr. Chapman about replacing the concrete blocks, which he broke all across the thing, so we're gonna get to my basement, and he keeps telling me he's gonna fix it. So my concern is, and although I trust my city to do the right thing, it just is a number of things, Emily's point, that still do not get addressed, that do not show up in letters, and I just want to make sure that we're all over set. So as long as, you know, we don't consider water, I work at home when I'm not flying, it's just, that was really my concern.
All right, we understand. And if you, Emily, you know more than anybody, especially being what you do for a living. If there's a resident that is not compliant with the city code, that's, you need to let the city know.
I did.
You did?
I did.
I'll follow up with...
They told me to call Mr. Chapman, which I have, so, multiple times.
Okay.
And he tells me now that when he does the concrete for his driveway, he'll fix it. But in the meantime, in the winter...
Right, you're right.
The bottom line is he won't get a CO for the house until it's fixed.
Well, that's great, but in the meantime, we have to look at it. In the meantime, I can trip over. In the meantime, if I'm walking to my basement, I've got all broken concrete.
So it's on your property?
It's on my property.
So, all right.
Yeah, okay.
I would talk to code.
He got his electrical line.
I'll talk to code tomorrow, and it's gonna have to be repaired.
What's your address?
One thirteen South Newport.
One thirteen, okay.
And it really is, I love my city, it has nothing to do with that, just trying to be...
I understand, I understand. Nobody wants a pipe broken in the winter, I understand.
We're just concerned if who pays for the pipe that they're working on.
But to circle back to that, to circle back to that, though, these...
That's my point.
I got you.
These supply lines are all independent, so the lines that are going to, that are for this new construction are not gonna impact the supply to your house. They're independent in separate places.
Just remember to drip your water at night when it's real cold.
I know, dude.
I know you do. I know.
Other than the line being...
I know, I know.
We've already been there.
I know, I know. You have every right to come, and I understand what you're saying. Nobody wants something like that to happen in their home, any, at any time.
It's because of the letter that was sent to us, did not say everything of what parameter, even when it is even scheduled, we don't even know that either.
Right.
And personally, I think he should've said that in the letter, that it was specifically said, like, could we know it was next Tuesday?
Right.
Or we're not allowed to know that, it's a big secret.
Well, they won't know that, they won't know that. When they do that, they won't know that until they come through this process.
Right, right.
There's no way the builder or the guy digging the utilities would know that, because they have to come here first.
Right.
No, that's fine.
So that's the process. So what I would like to do, maybe, Tim, you could help us, write a standard letter that will go to any builder, contractor, who's gotta open up the street, so they know exact, so it's better worded. It's not their words, it's our words.
Right.
So that might solve some of their problems.
Right, that's why we came, we did one night.
And then I will edit that.
Okay. That might help you guys to know a little bit more about...
Like Jackie says, she works at home, I'm in and out, I'll leave the house, and we have constant traffic on that street. It's not a normal street in the city, it's like Little Rock Avenue.
Right.
Our street is busy 24/7.
Yeah, we got the community building, the library.
And a lot of old people there, and they're gonna freak out of their brain once they find out there's construction on the street.
Right.
And I'm not saying they're wonderful people, but they have trouble parking, let alone dealing with construction on the street.
I know, I know, I got you.
It shouldn't be that long, but I appreciate you coming out to help, and hopefully, you're coming out, will help us make the process better in the future.
And even if you put a notice over there, tell them that it's gonna happen on Wednesday, so they don't get...
The seniors, yes.
Bingo game.
I know.
You know?
Right.
Is there anyone here from Chapman Construction?
Yeah, I spoke to you.
Okay. And anything you want to say to appease these residents' concerns?
I spoke to you a few times about your sidewalk.
Ben, you gotta come up and...
Ben, you have to state your name.
State your name.
Yeah, I spoke to you a couple times about your sidewalk. I took a look at it.
Ben, you have, you have to say your name and your address.
Say your name and address.
Okay. Ben Chapman, one oh two South Franklin Avenue in Margate. Yeah, I looked at your sidewalk, and I told you I would take care of it.
I know, but it's winter.
Okay.
And so we talked about it in the spring, in the summer, and so it's now winter.
I mean, to be honest, I went and looked at your sidewalk, and there's cracks, or they weren't new cracks, and...
No, and you, those blocks were, those cement blocks were completely stable, there were no, yes, there are, you know, normal cracks, but you broke the blocks, the concrete blocks are broken.
I mean...
They were not broken...
Okay, Tim?
Yeah, we're not gonna get into that.
Okay.
I got it.
Yeah, I don't want...
All I'm gonna do is fix it, that's all they ask for.
All right, anything else?
Can you, when you have the work scheduled, can you provide notes to the neighbors?
Okay, I mean, I have your number.
Do you have notes of when the...
Okay.
Do you know who your contractor will be?
Sam Burns. Yeah, I mean, he's really good, he's fast.
Ten bucks.
I mean, he's been doing, you know, for probably forty years at least, maybe fifty years. I mean, he'll be in and out in, you know, a day and a half. And we're doing, I just want to clarify, we're doing the Newport extension and also the Stratford extension?
There's one on...
There's one on Stratford and one on Newport.
Right.
And 5900 Boardwalk, that's just, that's just a lateral. You know, we're not extending any main or anything like that, we're just doing a straight lateral.
Understood.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
The Newport was the one we talked about beforehand, right?
Yeah, so it's Stratford and Newport, and...
We're not doing a public hearing on the Newport one tonight.
No, this is for Stratford.
Yeah, they're kind of combined, because it's only one.
Right.
It's gonna be, I'm gonna do both of them.
Yeah, but I don't...
Yeah, I mean, the...
It is Stratford, but it was...
Okay.
Yeah, but that's not the line, it's just the two of them here.
Yeah, yeah, I mean...
The walls that were covered across to Stratford.
No, I mean, we're extending the main on Stratford and also on Newport. And Newport is gonna be for the house, you know, that vacant lot right now, then the Stratford one obviously is for the house almost done with. Yeah.
So this one, then, if this is for Stratford, don't think that it's for Newport.
That's the one we've had a discussion on, that'll be on our next meeting's agenda for public hearing.
The Stratford one?
No, Stratford's right now.
And we're...
Oh, okay. Yeah, because the...
The one actually comes...
Yeah. The confusion is that one sixteen South Stratford really doesn't even exist right now, because we haven't completely subdivided it, so the address is the one fifteen South Newport for the house that's almost complete. So I think that's what the confusion is.
Well, the item on the agenda is one sixteen South Stratford.
Yes.
So that's the home that's almost complete.
Yes.
The other one that's on the agenda is 5900 Boardwalk. What, that's...
That's just the latter.
Yeah.
Fifty-nine-hundred Boardwalk is...
Yeah, just a lateral.
Is the other...
Yes.
The other street down, I want to say, not Dorset.
Yeah, but I actually...
Derby, Derby or Dorset.
So tonight is just, is one sixteen South Stratford, that's the one I, so these people aren't, won't even be affected by that one.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, because we're doing...
But you're within the 250 feet, so they got noticed.
Yeah, they got the notice.
Yeah, we will, you know, kind of be extending that, but, you know, in the meantime, we're gonna be, you know, doing the one sixteen...
So they're not, you're not opening Newport?
No.
Not yet. Did you hear us talk in our workshop about a discussion item that talked about the Newport Avenue one?
Yeah.
That'll go through this process at our next meeting.
So it's not, your street's not getting affected probably until March?
So you're ahead of the game, which is good.
At least, you know.
Yeah. It'll be warmer, hopefully.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay?
But when's the hearing on subdividing that lot? That lot's not subdivided.
That goes to our planning board.
It's not at this board.
As the planning board. That's the planning board.
And every, all our meetings are on our website, and the agendas are posted. Okay? You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming out.
Okay, the next we have are resolutions to vote by consent, and that is Resolution twenty twenty dash zero zero one through twenty twenty dash zero five six, including Prague. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt Resolutions twenty twenty dash zero zero one through zero five six by consent.
Do I have a second?
Second motion?
Lisa, roll call, please.
Mr. Kreebel?
Yes.
Mr. Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Next, we have our bills and payroll, our CFO, will you please give us those amounts?
Yes, okay, the bills, for a bill list is two million, two hundred eighty-one thousand, oh thirty-eight eleven, I have copies of them here.
Thank you.
And for payroll, uh, the six hundred seventy-three thousand, five sixty-eight seventy-one.
I need another one, there's actually two payrolls.
Okay, second payroll, I'll need one more.
Which was the one he did?
Uh, he did.
He did now. The second one is dated twelve one through twelve fourteen, that's five hundred thou- five hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty cents.
Nice. Do I have a motion to approve bills and payroll stated by the CFO and Commissioner Langria?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call, please.
Mr. Kreebel?
Yes.
Mr. Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Next on our agenda is any announcement or safety report? Lance?
Um, I have Commissioner comments, that's the next one I have.
That's the next one, yes.
You okay?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so I'll skip that.
Commissioner comments.
Next, we have Commissioner comments and reports. Commissioner Langria?
So, we finally received our DEP permit for the pier structures.
Yes.
Both the bathroom and the-
Snack stands.
Concession stands, yes.
Concession stand.
I was surprised they gave us that.
Yeah, me too, that was a big bonus.
That was a big bonus. Um, they, they did have a condition in there that surprised me, that we had to get Army Corps approval. Called up Steve Rochette at the Army Corps, I'm like, Steve, can I send you an email from the DEP, a permit we just got? And he's like, yeah, what's going on? He said, they requiring you to approve this, he's like, you don't need our approval, save this email, send it to them, you don't need our approval. So, we're good. So the bids are gonna go out, the specs are getting worked on through Kathy and you, Ed?
Monday is in paper.
Tuesday, I think.
Tuesday.
A pre-bid meeting, clarifies, and the opening, you know, the first meeting.
Okay.
Great.
So we're gonna push to get this, these-
Moving fast.
First, the restroom, demo the old one, start building the new one, we're gonna push for this year.
Yeah.
That, I'm sorry, that's gonna require us to most likely close access to the pier during that, those two construction times.
Right.
So we're gonna have to let our, our pier members know that during the demolition of the, the existing structure, it's gonna be closed. We may be able to reopen it temporarily before the construction restarts. Um, what I'd also like to do is get the design plans up on our website again, I know they were there.
Yeah.
Let's get them back up, we can show people them, and, yeah.
Um, are you, did you, I, I missed it, did you talk about the dates of the bidding?
Yeah.
Okay, so are you comfortable with us posting on that until, um-
It's going out in the paper on Tuesdays.
It's going on the paper, so, okay, so after Tuesday.
Lisa said Tuesday.
I think I saw that today, I double checked, I think Kathy said Tuesday, yes.
So that, that's really good news?
That's great news.
It's been a while getting, getting through the DEP.
So we'll do a post on the, um, on the, on the-
Pier.
The pier, the bidding, the pier itself, and that the, we, we passed the, uh, the DEP approvals, and we're going into bidding.
Yep.
Finally.
Got our general permit, we're ready to go.
Three years later.
Um, just a couple new, two new things, um, two new members of the advisory committee, um, were appointed tonight through one of the resolutions. Um, Jim Quinlan, who is a newer resident to, to Vettner, he's an attorney out of Philadelphia, um, expressed interest, and, and, um, we appointed him, I've met with him a couple times now. Very interested in getting involved in the city as a new resident. And the second is Scott Oster, um, Heights resident, year-round resident as well. Um, met him a couple summers ago here on the beach, and just was a guy that, larger than life, where do you meet him? He's a-
Former professional.
Former NFL football player, played for Temple, uh, and then played for the Tampa Bay Buccaneers.
Guess we can't like, we can't miss him.
We, no, you will not miss him. Um, we will have our own sergeant-at-arms at the-
There you go.
At hot committee meetings, great guy, really full of energy, which is one of the reasons I-
It's Scott.
Yeah.
And full-time, which is good.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So that is a mix, though, we do have-
We have a mix, but I think it's hard for the out-of-counters to get here.
It is, but we've, we've been able to Skype in, or use the thing, so. Um, I think that's it, right, Ed, nothing else major from our standpoint? Thank you, that's it.
Okay, um-
I, I, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I'll go last, I should go last, you go.
I'll, I'll be really brief, I just wanted to, um, mention again that I'm gonna be, um, discussing the, um, uh, parking permits at the, uh, the meeting on the, on the thirteenth-
February.
Of February, so we're gonna try to have a bit of a workstation, a workshop with, um, the North Beach residents, again. Uh, Chief Biagi, myself, and, um, I'm going to invite the high-rise, um, I've got contacts for all the, the, um, presidents of the boards for all the high-rises, so I'll be sending out a letter to them, inviting them, as well as the North Beach, uh, community, just to get, um, um, you know, all the information that we have out there. Again, I'd like to, um, because it, it is, it, with the, with the theater coming-
Yes.
Um, we wanna be as, as-
Proactive.
Pro, and as, as, as open to the public about what the, um, what we think the, the next step for those, uh, for the permanent parking there, and you, you have an expert-
So, yes, um, so you're gonna have a meeting outside of the thirteenth, prior to the thirteenth, with the neighbors.
No, we're gonna have, we're inviting them here on the thirteenth.
We might actually have people show up then.
Yeah.
Um, so Dave Shropshire, who is a traffic engineer that I've known for thirty-some years-
Right.
An expert in that field, he's gonna come-
He would be actually a person who would do a, a study for this.
He's who we're gonna bring in to do that study, as a professional services contractor.
Right.
Um, we can bring him in, and he's, he's comfortable coming on the thirteenth without really having a lot of information, this'll be his first, you know, download of information from Vettner, so.
Right.
He lives in Ocean City, so he's aware of summertime explosions and populations that, uh, we have.
Right.
So he, he's aware of that, so.
So it'll be similar to the opening house that we had at the, at the community center, it's just, uh, you know, there's a, there's a sort of a confluence of information that I think contradicts the way that we're doing business now there.
Yes.
Especially the number of, of, especially the number of permits that we give out.
Yeah.
And so, um, so we, we just wanna, before we make, take any action, I think it's a good thing that we engage the public in it.
Great, thank you.
Just one thing, two things I missed, if I can go back to that?
No, you're not allowed, go ahead, I'm teasing you.
Um, there was a major article in the front page of the press today on the theater.
Was that the one they called me on?
Yes, you were, you were interviewed in there, yes.
I wanted to see it.
You didn't see the article?
I didn't see the article yet.
Front page of the paper. Um, got to walk through there today.
Yeah.
Um, it's really coming along, it still looks like someone dumped a big thing, cauldron of pasta, over the building, cause wires are everywhere. But, um, sheet rock is up in the main theater, they've got the profile of the stadium seating on the wall-
Right.
Set in, so it's, it's, it's coming along, they are hoping for an April, April opening.
Great.
I talked to Clint today, um, about a couple of things, utility-wise coming, he's, he's reached out to Ed, I think, for utility contractors. I gave him somebody as well today that he might be able to reach out to, cause everybody's busy. Um, Santucci's, they are moving along as well, very quickly. Um, you see, they painted the building, um, they're moving like gangbusters inside, they're also on the same schedule, so it's a race to the first legal beer in Vettner, so.
That's funny, you're right, yeah, you're right.
It'll be fun, and I've mentioned that to both of them.
Right.
That we need to have a little celebration.
There should be something, yeah, absolutely.
That'll, that'll be fun. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
Could you have anything else?
No, thank you, Earl.
Let me just, just mention something, although this is, um, pertaining to the school, um, as taxpayers, you pay a nice, um, part of your tax bill to, for our school in Vettner. So the V E C C is current, they have an outside consultant that came in to, um, help them on a search for a new superintendent, our superintendent that's been there, uh, I think between principal superintendent, like fourteen years, she will be retiring in June. So they, uh, they brought in a consultant, not only for the search of a new superintendent, but also to look at the, um, the overall needs of basically administration and other things in the school. And that just leads me into, um, we, the commission, have been very, um, aggressive with the school and their budget, we have not, you know, we don't, we don't rubber stamp it. And, um, I started early this year in the fall, sending out an email to the board president, vice president, letting them know what we asked for a year ago at the, uh, board of school estimates meeting, to remind them what we expect from them when they, uh, submit their budget to us. Their budget, um, we found ways to save the taxpayers the past two years, and hopefully, we'll be able to do it again this year. So just, just throw that out there, because if you don't go to, well, even if you went to the meetings, you probably wouldn't know that. So, just so you know, we have our, we have our, uh, a pulse on what goes on with the budget at the school, which directly affects all the taxpayers. And that's all I think I have. Okay, we're good? Do we have an executive session?
We do not.
We do not.
The public comment.
Okay, so now I will, uh, make, I have a motion to open to the public, if you'd like to get up and say anything on any topic. Do I have a motion to open to the public?
Motion to open public comment.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone from the public like to get up? You gotta come up to the microphone, state your name and address, even though we know you, but we have to still. Did you bring us a present?
Four eighteen, Marcia Gillespie, four eighteen North Oxford.
Yeah, can you pull that down for her? Never mind.
There you go.
Marcia Gillespie, four eighteen North Oxford. So, I went to the comic, the, um, the craft show, the last one, and I saw this painting. And you know how I feel about the restaurants? We have twenty-two restaurants, and I think we need PR about that, I mean, it's crazy for this little town to have twenty-two restaurants, and they're getting a little diversified lately. We lost one, one Italian, and I think there's a new breakfast place going in, is that true?
So Velo, you're talking about Cardinal Bistro in Velo?
Hmm?
You're talking about Cardinal Bistro in Velo, or no?
No, Dominico's.
Oh, right, yep, yep.
Dominico's.
I haven't heard who's coming in there yet.
I haven't heard who's coming in yet, either.
I was gonna call him to tell him there's two people that just got a two hundred dollar gift certificate to his place.
Oh, boy.
He maybe should stay. Anyway, so I saw this, okay? So, this is not what I'm thinking of, but I think we should think of something like this coming down Wellington Avenue, with-
Oh.
I mean, we've got twenty-two restaurants, we need to find some PR-
Marketing.
Put together, I mean, this is just that I just saw this, and I'll think about it, think about it with you.
The billboard.
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 Yep.
Yeah, okay, yes.
That's the kinda thing that a marketing company can help us do.
Exactly, good idea.
We're talking about in the future having some more PR and marketing, uh, as a part-time person that would bring out some of these types of things, and, and talk, so it's a perfect example of that.
This person could enlarge it, and then you get the guy to do the whatever.
It's, what's unique about Vettner, and we do have, our, our streets, our street, our on-the-street dining, I think is something that a lot of ci- not, not our neighboring cities have as much of, we have a lot of that alfresco dining, and that's part of it, yeah.
You're right.
Yeah, we're blowing up, aren't we, Marcia?
What's the possibility of, uh, what do I wanna say? The potty things on the bo- beach, like Florida.
The what?
Porta potties.
Porta potty.
On the beach, like they do in Florida, they're magnificent.
Are they pretty?
Huh?
Well, they're, they're permanent structures, right?
Well, we just discussed the pier bathroom, and the pier bathroom now had, was a temporary structure that only had one bathroom.
But we're gonna have two.
The new bathroom will have a men's room with, uh, a ladies' room and a family room, so it'll have, and each, each men's and ladies will have at least three stalls in it, so it's gonna, it's not gonna be the lines like they had before. Um, but, uh, the next nearest bathroom is- Is the tennis courts and, and City Hall, so.
Yeah. So Marcia, what, sorry, Ms. Gillespie, uh, the, um, what, describe these restrooms to me, I, I don't know what, are they permanent structures, are they temporary?
Trailers.
I think, I don't know, I saw it online, and I went-
Where at in Florida, Marcia?
Hmm?
Where at in Florida?
Miami, all, all around there, I think.
I think in Nap- is it Nap?
I'll look it up.
Okay, yeah, we could probably look, yeah.
I know-
Sheff Cheryl, where they live.
There's portable ones that come in on a trailer, you have to provide power to them, though, and you have to hook them up to sanitary sewer. So that's the problem, getting the waste out of them. One, it's hard to get them on the beach, we could get them there, physically get them there. Don't know the DEP would approve them on the beach, cause if you have a storm, you have to get them off rather quickly. And if they're tied to a sewer line, to get that, that waste over the dune, we can do it at the pier, cause it's elevated, that, there's a line that runs back.
Right.
Um, and I know this only because of what they did in Atlantic City for the concerts, those are pumped temporarily to a holding tank, and they're only there for two days for an event, and then they're taken off the beach.
Okay, too much information.
But, uh, it would be nice to have-
With all the people down there now, I don't think somebody can find that out.
I agree, I agree. I, I'll, I'll take a look into that, if you want me to.
Thank you, but.
I like that, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
As always, Marcia, thank you.
Yes.
Have to bear with me, it's-
That's okay.
Tim Greischer, one seventeen North Somerset Avenue. First, I wanna, uh, compliment the, and thank the commission for putting the meetings online, I think it's, uh, it's a big plus. Two, I mentioned the alfresco dining, and brought back memories that when we did that, it was the end of civilization as we knew it.
I remember, I remember.
It was gonna be, you know, unbelievable.
It is, I remember, that was with you, I remember.
So you had pushback when that happened?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it was, it was the end of civilization.
It was, it was, I remember that.
And it's-
So, it just brought back memories. Commissioner Langria, she brought up about the bathrooms, um, and maybe it expired, but the city at one time, I'm surprised it took that long to get the permit, because the city had a zane letter from the state that allowed to be built what was there previously.
Expired, expired.
Expired, okay.
It's a five-year permit.
Five years, and the city never acted on it, and-
Yep.
Okay, that explains that. But is there gonna be a clubhouse with the bathrooms, or is it just bathrooms?
So, so the, the building that'll be replaced, where the current office, pier offices and the restroom is, the single restroom, will have two restrooms, a men's and a women's, with multiple toilets in each one, so you won't have this line down the pier. There will be a much smaller pier office, we haven't told the pier master that yet, but-
Right.
But it'll be, wait till you see this thing, Mayor, it's, it's gonna be all, Tim can describe it better than me.
Yeah, so the-
Pretty.
So the first bump out, where the existing temporary structure is, we're using the entire footprint, and instead of having a gate that is just a single door, we discuss, we, we designed in more of a pocket gate, so the entire eight-foot opening will be open. And then there's gonna be a, a, a small breezeway that you walk into, you go to the left into a men's room, which is about two, about a, a third of the structure, and that'll have, uh, vanity, two st- two urinals and a stall. You'll walk down the opposite direction down the breezeway into a ladies' room, will have two stalls and a, and a vanity, and then further down, a small, narrow, private, family restroom, which will have a stall and a vanity. And then the final component will have, uh, windows facing the pier, with, uh, the pier master's office and a Dutch door for selling things of that nature. We won't have a, um, a, uh, clubhouse for, uh, for fishermen, we're trying to make this more of a, uh, for the public residence. So on the sec- on the second bump out, where there's a, a rusted bike rack right now, which never made sense, because you're not allowed to have a bike out there, is-
Can't ride a bike, you can walk the bike.
Walk the bike out there.